We're pleased this evening to have with us Pastor Stephen Hoseva from the Northfield Hills Baptist Church to provide us with an invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise Pastor. Good evening.
Evening. I was all power here.
Would you like to adjust the mic for you there? Thank you.
As power heads as we give thanks. Our gracious and holy Father, we come before you as we gather before you tonight, Lord Father, we want to acknowledge your holy and high and elevated name, a name which is above every name, and Lord, we ask for the wisdom that the mayor and the city council need together to do the city's business. We ask your Holy Spirit to guide them and truly that they will work as one. We thank you, Lord Father, that we are fearfully and wonderfully made, Lord. Your hand of creation has been upon all of us. We are amazed, Lord Father, at your grace and your continued mercy upon all of us. We are debtors to you, and we ask that your Holy Spirit, in all that is said within these walls tonight, all that is done will truly bring glory and honor to you, and it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor. Always nice to see you. Thanks for taking time this evening to give us our invocation. May we have the roll call Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling.
Here.
Councilmember Beltramini.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
Howarak.
Here.
Kerwin.
Here.
McGuinness.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Quorum present, this evening our first order of business is our public hearings, and so we have our city assessor Nino Lakari ready and able to get, head us in the right direction. Thank you.
You must know a different city assessor. Good evening ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me up here. We have three public hearings tonight, all concerning tax abatements, all for Arvin Meritor for a new division they're starting up, and this is a very, very large investment by a long-term corporate tenant here in Troy, going back to the Rockwell days. They've got campus there on East Maple Road or West Maple Road. Very exciting for them, also for the city of Troy. Their total investment when they're done with this project will be well over $20 million. They intend to add 125 jobs to the 749 they currently have at the campus. It's a very, very large investment for them. They intend to do some work on the buildings. The main complex is very well maintained. All of their properties are well maintained, but they're just functionally obsolete at this point in time. They don't meet today's manufacturing standards. The equipment that they're bringing in requires quite a bit of renovation, so that phase of the abatement would take two different abatements. So they're going to be applying for tax abatement on personal property tonight and a plant rehabilitation abatement, and then in two years we expect to see them back for another six or eight million dollar investment in their properties. It's quite an investment. They intend to stay in Troy. They made a conscious effort to stay in Troy. So the first public hearing will actually be to establish a district, and it will cover two districts. It'll be an industrial development district and a plant rehabilitation district. This will be slightly different than the way we normally present these to you. I usually give you all the information upfront. Since the two other tax abatements are so different, I like to present them separately. I would recommend at this point in time that you do establish the district. If you should decide to vote down either one of the tax abatements, we can always amend the district, revisit that resolution that you've just addressed. Again, let me point out, this current investment's about $17 million. The 125 new jobs is just a bonus for Troy here. There's going to be a huge amount of tax money involved here. I will bring that up in the next two, two public hearings. And I should point out that this particular memo, and there are two errors here tonight, specifies that the IFEC is for 11 years. Both are for 12. That mistake will carry forward into the next public hearing, while I will ask you to adjust the resolution if you should so vote to approve it. Also from Arvin Meritor, Jerry Rush is here, Octavio Williams, who I've worked with on many different projects, Julie Garisi and Brad Hicks. And if you have a moment, Mr. Rush would like to present a bit for the company before we open the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rush, how are you?
Well, thank you, Nino, and thank you for your support. Nino's been very, very helpful in this project as we've worked on it over the past several months. Good evening, Mayor Schilling, members of city council, John Zurlag. Appreciate very much the opportunity to be here. I'm Jerry Rush. I'm Senior Director of Government and Community Relations at Arvin Meritor, and on behalf of our chairman, CEO and president, Chip McClure, we greatly appreciate your hearing our requests here today. I know you have a full roster this evening to consider, and so I'll keep my comments brief, but I do want to make sure and introduce our team that has been working with your team extensively over the past several months. Julie Garisi, who many of you know, who works as manager of government and community relations for Arvin Meritor, Brad Hicks, executive engineer, who will be working with hiring new engineers for our facility, and Octavio Williams, as Nino pointed out, is our property tax manager for state and municipal taxes. This team has worked closely with Nino, with John, with Pam, and others to create 125, an environment where we can create 125 new positions, primarily engineers and technical folks at the Arvin Meritor facility, and invest significantly in our world headquarters located on West Maple. What we are doing here is truly a public-private partnership that does not end this evening. Rather, we will meet again on a regular basis at Arvin Meritor with city officials, beginning as early as tomorrow. We have a 10:30 meeting, and John and the team, Pam and others will be there, together with the county and the state, to assess our progress and review how we are doing to assure that if things are approved here this evening, that the citizens of Troy, the investments made by the citizens of Troy, as well as the management of Arvin Meritor, are made for the good of all. Because of your support, Arvin Meritor remains committed to Michigan and to the city of Troy, and can be seen through the work of people like Julie out in the community, and Brad, while he's hiring employees, hopefully just as many Troy employees as possible. And Octavio, as he makes sure that we run this program appropriately. So Arvin Meritor will grow, we will invest, and with your help and collaboration, we are here for the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing then on this item. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this item from the public? Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing and return it to the council table for a resolution.
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem Kerwin.
Resolved, Troy City Council hereby establishes an industrial development district, IDD, and plant rehabilitation district, PRD, for property known as 2135 West Maple, Troy, Michigan, 48084, parcel number 88-20-32-126-035, in accordance with city council policy resolution number 2010-08-173. And be it further resolved, the Troy City Council has determined that this district shall also be used for plant rehabilitation, and that property comprising not less than 50% of the state equalized value, SCV, within the district is obsolete. And be it finally resolved, that Troy City Council hereby directs the city clerk to forward a copy of this resolution to the State Tax Commission Treasury Building, P.O. Box 30471, Lansing, Michigan, 48909-7971.
Do we have second?
Support.
Councilman Beltramini, did I hear you first? Yes. Ara, mics up. I'm sorry. Thank you. Moved by Mayor Protem Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Beltramini, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion?
Here.
Councilman Howarak.
I don't think any of you will be surprised that I'll be voting against all three of these resolutions, not because of any transgression I feel that Arvin Meritor may have committed, but it has to do with the policy of tax abatements. And, you know, we've, city councils and city management over the years have worked very hard to have a low tax rate, and as a matter of fact, there are other communities in southeast Michigan whose mill levies are as much as four or five times greater and have income taxes, and we don't have either the high taxes or the income tax, and we also have very good police and fire and services that we offer. And so I find it very difficult to give tax abatements because of the fact that it selectively discounts individual entities' tax rates, and that's the part that I have difficulty with. I appreciate your corporate citizenry and look forward to you being a continued citizen in Troy and appreciate it, but I just wanted to explain my upcoming votes.
I feel the opposite. It's true. I've been in favor of these resolutions for abatements for our businesses, and interestingly enough, just last Wednesday night, when our new governor Snyder did his State of the State address, he talked about gardening our present businesses and encouraging them to stay and to do well in Michigan, and I think this falls right in line with that. We have some, many businesses in Troy that have been here for many years, and under the former policy, they really could not come forward to ask for abatements on certain things, and now that that is available, and it's a tool that other communities are using as well, I think it bodes well for us to say that we appreciate the fact that businesses want to stay, continue and grow. With a $20 million investment and 125 jobs with all the resolutions here, I think this is exactly the thing that we need to have for our community.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Kerwin.
To the same point, all of the other taxing authorities have been notified, and there's none here. So the other taxing authorities have shown no objection to this at all. I know that my colleague before has talked about abatements creating winners and losers. Right now, what we recognize are 125 jobs. That's a big win. It was a week ago, I attended a different board meeting where one of our manufacturing firms had announced the ability to hire one new engineer, and we all applauded. We were so excited about this. Here we're looking at high-tech jobs, engineers. We have many unemployed in our own community, wonderful workers, a great value for money here in Troy. So whether Arvin Meritor finds employees with our, in our own city, or whether they're attracted to our housing stock, our fine schools, and many of the services that Council member Howarak mentioned, we welcome them here and are excited to partner in order to have this happen. So that's how I feel about it. I'll be supporting all three.
Are there any other comments on the resolution before we have a vote? Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote please.
Mayor Schilling.
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini.
Yes.
Fleming.
Yes.
Howarak.
No.
Kerwin.
Yes.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Lakari for E2, the public hearing on the establishment of the industrial facilities exemption certificate.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, and once again, I'm remiss, I did not mention Pam Valentic, who does a tremendous amount of work on these. I thank Jerry for picking up the slack for me there. Sooner or later Pam will stop talking to me altogether. This is for the industrial facilities exemption certificate. This is the personal property investment that Meritor Heavy Vehicle Systems intends to purchase. It's $10.683 million within the first two years. Their total tax bill on that amount, should it not be abated, would be a little better than $405,000, of which 128.7 would be city taxes. So their savings on a 50% exemption will amount to $202,575 over the 12-year abatement on their total tax bill. Of that amount, $64,371 approximately will be city taxes. Again, huge investment, a lot of jobs, a company that's willing to stay here. I really don't want to belabor the point, but it's very important that we remember that these people had the option to leave, and they're going to invest in upgrading their facilities on top of this major investment. And that's pretty much all I have on the tax abatement portion. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item that is here? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, return it to the table for a resolution.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Beltramini.
I would move that we establish the industrial facilities exemption for Meritor Heavy Vehicles LLC at 2135 West Maple with the resolution as printed.
Support.
Twelve years.
Yes.
Twelve years.
This is the one, this is the one with the error in it, so the resolution does need to be amended. You have?
The agenda has it correct in this one and the next one, so it was caught. Thank you. I move by Councilwoman.
It's not. Okay.
Move by Councilwoman Beltramini, second.
This one does need to read 12 years.
Correct. It's the second whereas?
Yeah. So you want me to read it so that then we know? Whereas an application has been submitted for, by Meritor Heavy Vehicles LLC, for an industrial facilities exemption certificate, IFEC, for personal property at 2135 West Maple, Troy, Michigan, 48084, for 12 years after completion and.
Third to the last paragraph has the 12 years. Do we need to correct the, the next resolution too? Okay. Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we approve the resolution as corrected. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltramini.
Yes.
Fleming.
Yes.
Howarak.
No.
Kerwin.
Yes.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mayor Schilling.
Yes. Motion passes, and the third is the public hearing for the establishment of the industrial facilities exemption certificate. Mr. Lakari?
Yes, thank you again, Madam Mayor. This is for plant rehabilitation. We've only had one of these abatements issued before this point in time. There are five structures on the site that Arvin Meritor will be using. They'll be upgrading all of them eventually. This portion of the abatement would be for two of those structures, where they intend to invest $6.368 million in renovations and improvements to these structures. Plant rehabilitation works slightly differently than the personal property tax abatement, wherein their current taxable value will be frozen for the life of this exemption, and they will pay taxes based on that amount. That in and of itself is an oddity in this climate where values are dropping. We're guaranteed a revenue stream that we normally wouldn't get. Normally their taxable value would be dropping probably over the next five or six years. They're going to pay taxes on their current taxable value, their 2011 taxable value, which they haven't actually even gotten yet. The estimation on that is that their frozen taxes will be about $248,000, of which $48,000 is city taxes. That's a guaranteed revenue stream to the city. What they gain by that is that there is no taxes on the improvements that they make to the structures. They will have to complete the improvements within the two-year timeframe that's allotted to them, so their savings will be about $155,000, of which almost $30,000 is city taxes. That's the cost to the city on this one, is the $30,000, but bearing in mind that we're guaranteed the $48,000 for the life of the exemption, and that's pretty much all I have on that one.
Other questions for Mr. Lakari on this before I open the public hearing? Okay, open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone that's here that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, return it to the council table for a resolution.
Mayor.
Councilman Slater.
I'll move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilwoman McGuinness, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Howarak.
No.
Kerwin.
Yes.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mayor Schilling.
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini.
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you, and thanks for staying in Troy.
Absolutely.
Our next order of business is our public comment section, and this is on either items that are on the agenda or not on the agenda, for the five-minute time allotment for each person, and I'll call on you in the order in which you signed up out on the kiosk. So we'll have Janice Daniels.
How are you? Good evening, council management. I would only wonder with the Arvin Meritor tax abatements that you've just given, have you discussed or talked to Arvin Meritor's competitors and how they might feel about the fact that you've given a tax abatement to their competitor and thereby reduced their ability to earn a living? It's just a question. Even though I can't attend all of these city council meetings, and even though I leave after I make my comments, which typically are ignored, I've been carefully observing what's been going on with this, in this city with regard to the budget process and the ongoing efforts of the council and your city management to thwart the will of the people by continuing to use our public library as a political pawn in an effort to raise our taxes one way or the other in this time of great economic uncertainty and in fact unparalleled distress that is being experienced by a growing number of taxpaying citizens of this city and in fact this nation. In fact, I'd like to add that I thank God daily in this era of great uncertainty for the advanced technology that we have at our fingertips, like television, where I can continue to watch the council meetings once I arrive home, and then I can watch replays on Wednesday mornings, I can watch them again on Thursday evenings, twice on Saturday, twice on Sunday, not to mention the fact that I can watch these council meetings ad nauseam on my computer any day of the week, any time of the day. So trust me, there's no lack of respect being shown to anyone for my leaving this room after I have been at my office for nine hours a day, and I only wish to come before you to express my opinions. I would only ask that the tax and spenders in the crowd drop that little dig from their repertoire of talking points. But more importantly, I'm shocked that this council would so blatantly and recklessly disregard the charter of this city. I would like to remind you that each of you have sworn an oath to uphold our city charter. That's your constitution, and quite frankly, you've torn it asunder with your most recent tactics of having to sue a private individual with your most recent tactics of bringing a citizen into court to clarify supposedly an ordinance request that simply states that our public library will be open for at least 55 hours a week. You have two options according to the city charter when you were presented with a valid citizen petition initiative. You could have accepted the petition, thereby joining the majority of taxpaying citizens who are dedicated to keeping our world-class library open, or you could have chosen to keep your belligerent opposition to maintaining a city-run library and decline the petition and set it up for a vote of the people, and we know how that would have turned out. Those were your two constitutional options. There was no third option, and that was to be decided by January 3 of this new year. And so if our well-compensated and highly-educated city attorney could not singularly determine that this is an administrative issue versus a legislative issue, then it would seem to me that she could have sent an urgent request for clarification with a mandate for a response within that 30-day limit that is unambiguously defined in the charter. Even a sitting judge, with all due respect, doesn't have the authority to ignore the city charter at will. If in fact a judge does have that kind of arbitrary ability to disregard our charter, then why even have a charter at all? Have you considered looking at the budget from a constitutionally limited mandate, which is your sworn duty? Governments at all levels have grown way too expansive at the taxpayers' expense, and that needs to stop. Mayor, you talked about needing a significant sustained funding before you would even consider keeping the library open. Do you have some special crystal ball that's informed you that such funds won't exist in the future? What if your budget projections are wrong? Why can't you join the majority of citizens in this city to whom you represent, who would like to see our library funded for at least the year 2011 while we continue to seek new ways to generate additional revenue? Mayor, please reconsider your opposition to the will of the people. We only need your cooperation. You can heal this city today with your singular directive. Your legacy is being built here, one way or the other. This will be your defining issue. Do what's right. Do it for the constitution. Do it for your legacy. Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Richard Peters. Mr. Peters? How are you?
Hi. Hi, powerful mayor. It's been an awful, good couple of weeks, I mean, a week for law enforcement, and I want to.
Do you want to adjust the mic?
Yeah.
I'm having trouble hearing you. Thank you.
It's been kind of a week here for law enforcement across this country, and, you know, I'm sure we all go out for that. One has to wonder, speaking of the impact since the Supreme Court ruled on the Second Amendment not too long ago, seems to be an increase in shooting of police officers. I wanted to talk a little bit tonight about E85. It seems to me, I can understand why, maybe fuel can go up because there's a lack of refineries, which I said earlier, which I thought the government should build some more because of these, what happens here, these spikes. But I also think that the Federal Trade Commission should take a look at this E85 issue because this country exports 90, well, I didn't say exports, but 90% of the grain in this country goes for cattle feed, and only 7% is used for food, and my guess is fuel. My figures might be a little bit shaded, but from what I understand, that's pretty much how it goes. Now, both India and China have advanced, advanced programs in this area, as well as Brazil. Now, it seems to me, one would have to wonder, you know, why this fuel spike's so high right now? And if, I'm not much of a free trader in one sense, but if the tariffs are high in Latin America, then I think we should try to maybe reexamine that issue. Also concerning Troy, there's been a cross that's been up there on 18 and John R. for about a year and a half now. A gal was killed a long time ago, and it's sitting out in front of that Lutheran church, and I'm kind of wondering why that is. I mean, with all due respect for the bereaved people, we understand that, but I just think that this, that shouldn't be there. And finally, what else do I want to talk about? The library itself, I would hope that the council ponders it pretty well and uses judicial, you know, and hopefully we can come to a positive conclusion on this, and, you know, the people of Troy will be satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Mr. Savage is next. Jim Savage? Good evening, Mr. Savage.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Last year, it possibly been the year before, but a new feature was introduced at council meetings, that being the council response to visitor comment. I thought that was a good idea, as prior to that time, I sometimes thought no one was listening to me. However, at times, some council members, and particularly Councilmember Kerwin, have used that period as a sounding board for their own opinions. At the January 10th meeting, in response to my comments, Mrs. Kerwin claimed I spit out the word consultant in a derogatory fashion. Now, the people who have been watching and listening to my comments for about the last 10 or 12 years, I hope would agree that I tried to uphold the dignity of this occasion, and that I would never consciously make a derogatory slur, as Councilwoman Kerwin claimed. Now, I do admit to one time breaking the code of conduct. Most of my comments are my personal opinion, but I do try to base them on fact. Now, it is my opinion that the $50,000 paid to consultant Mr. Barlow was a waste of taxpayer money. Vision 2020, a glossy 45-page magazine. If you added to Mr. Barlow's $50,000, the staff time, printing, et cetera, I figure the cost could easily be closer to $100,000. And for what? Five years into the program, there is nothing in this fantasy book that resembles the reality of Troy today, and nowhere do I see any benefit to the residents of Troy. Now, this is the magazine, Vision 2020. I read it right through, and I don't see anything there in any paragraph where it actually benefits any member of this community. There's a lot of words there, but I urge you, read it through and see what your conclusion is. The featuring study is just one reason why I doubt the effectiveness of some consultants. Another instance is the privatizing of the building department. Did the consultant advise management of the likelihood of lawsuits? And who would pay the cost of that? Would it be SafeBuild or the taxpayer? And I have to wonder what Councilmember Kerwin bases her sweeping endorsement of all consultants on. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Mr. Burke. Thomas Burke is our next person who signed up to speak under public comment.
How could I be that quick?
Good evening, Mr. Burke.
Good evening. My comments tonight, I looked over some older agenda items for clarification. On November 17th, city staff, including the attorney and city manager, had sent a memo to council that resulted in the resolution to seek clarification on the Kemper ballot initiative. That is a very detailed, long, one-page memo, and it asks two things. One, to ask the court for clarification. It also has a statement that says a stay of proceedings could also be requested. Now, the actual resolution passed by council directs the city council to ask the Oakland County Circuit Court for clarity as to the Kemper initiative. It makes no mention as to asking for an extension of time. Under whose authority did the city manager do that? There have been numerous people come to council and say, "You're in violation of the city charter by failing to act on 30 days." That is a council issue. City council did not ask the city attorney to gain an extension of time. Who runs Troy? Isn't it council? Council asked for clarification. Clarification is a neutral position. Court is at A or B. That was the intention of council, I believe. Last Thursday, in filing with the court, the city manager, or, I'm sorry, the city attorney has taken that one step farther. She has asked for a directed verdict from the court to say the Kemper amendment, I believe the term is, not legislative. That's taking a position on a ballot initiative. That is prohibited by law. Council and the city is prohibited from using public funds, in this case, the city attorney's salary, to involve itself in a ballot initiative. A ballot initiative starts from the time the first thought comes to Mr. Kemper, to the time it's either enacted by city council or it's put on a vote. Why is city spending time and money in violation of the law? So now, we've now taken it one step further. We've got a potential violation of the city charter by council. Now, we've got a possible violation of state law by involving the city in, involving itself in a ballot initiative. So where does this stop? Could we please bring this to an end? You know, the extension of time that was asked for stated amongst its many, many misleading reasons is the great deal of deliberation council had to look into on this issue, and to date, there have been two council meetings, this is the third, there's been no time discussing the impact of the Kemper initiative at all. Lastly, it's embarrassing to read the filings prepared by city attorney. There are so many misleading statements in it. I'm embarrassed to be a citizen of Troy. And I use this. One of the statements says, as a statement of background fact, "Continued funding at the library at its current level would necessarily result in the layoff of 1/3 of the current police department." How is that possible when the current library budget is 2.5 million, the police department budget is over 25 million? Shame on the city of Troy. There's another comment in here that tries to draw a connection between a previous Michigan, Frank Kelly, not the current Attorney General, comment about allowing a minority to override a majority. As factual support to that, the comment is that there were 42,000 votes for the Troy city council member, and the defendant only has 2,000 petitioners signing his petitions, and 2,000 shouldn't be allowed to override 42,000. To my knowledge, the 2,000 people have no right to enact this law. All they can do is ask the six, seven of you to enact the law or to put it to a vote. In no case do the petitioners, as a minority, override the 42,000. Shame on, shame on the city attorney, and shame on council for not editing this trash before it gets put in the public record.
Our next speaker is Mr. Dan Brake. Do I have your name correct?
It's Brake, ma'am. That's right. The world is always trying to change it to Blake, but that's not right.
Good evening. I'm not a member of TCU. I had not compared my notes with Ms. Daniels or Mr. Burke. I'm afraid some of what I have to say might echo the words they've already used. But before I go there, I want to tell you that one of you tried to ask a question here two weeks ago, and you were refused an answer by city administration. It took me about 10 minutes when I got home, using public records, Troy's public budget records, to calculate that 1/5 of the labor budget for City Hall is $1.753 million. 10 minutes, and no union negotiation whatsoever to get there. Thank you. Troy's city charter, Section 512, "Council Procedure on Initiatory and Referendary Petitions", reads directly, "Upon the presentation to the council of an initiatory or referendary petition by the clerk," and that happened on December 6th, "the council shall, within 30 days, unless otherwise provided by statute," that's state law, "either adopt the ordinance as submitted by an initiatory petition, or determine to submit the proposal provided for in the petition to the electors." 30 days. Today is day 50. The Troy lawsuit language has already been referred to here, but let me repeat one point. On November 22, your resolution says hereby, council hereby directs the city attorney to file a declaratory action with the Oakland County Circuit Court to obtain clarity as to the Kempin Initiative Library Ordinance Petition. And we've been told since that that's a very neutral and benign, we're just asking somebody to tell us what it means. And then, last Saturday, I think that was the 15th, our city attorney is quoted in the Oakland Press, I marked this in the copy I just distributed to you on page two, there's a paragraph that reads in part, "The January 19th hearing," now, this is January 15th, this is being said, "The January 19th hearing date was a date that was provided as a measure of fairness, since the order allowing an extension of time was filed before Mr. Kempin was served or had an opportunity for input." It, the order, essentially sets a hearing date to allow for a challenge to the court's order allowing for an extension of time. That date referred to, January 19th, would have been Mr. Kempin's very first opportunity to appear in court. And yet, three days after this was in the paper, your attorney petitioned the court to postpone that date, put it all off, it doesn't matter, so it was moved to two weeks That happened on Monday or Tuesday, so the hearing date on January 19th, that was a Wednesday, that never occurred because of that request. And what happened instead was the next day, your attorney filed a request of the court, this is no longer exploring the clarity, searching for clarity, it reads in several places, "Plaintiff City of Troy has set forth a viable claim to enable this honorable court to issue a declaratory," actually says issuance a declaratory judgment, "to issue a declaratory judgment finding that the defendant's proposed initiative ordinance petition is not legislative in character." End of quote. What those words mean is, Your Honor, throw the petition out. It's a thing not created in laws or statute or our constitution. It's a thing created in courts by liberal judges who, starting about 30 years ago, decided they could find a difference between legislative petitions and administrative petitions. No support anywhere in statute. It's a total infringement on the people's right that's only created in liberal courts. In another place, this is your attorney's request to the court. Although a courtesy copy of the pleadings was emailed to defendant on the day of the filing, that's back in mid-December, formal service was not able to be effectuated on defendant until December 22. People hunting for Ed Kempin at home, at work, he even appeared here at one of your meetings during that time, but you couldn't find him to serve the subpoena until December 22. Just a coincidence that that leaves much longer time for you, the responding court, and to the petition. Sorry, I had a couple more things to say. Thank you.
Next, Steve Tolst signed up to speak.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Happy New Year's to everybody. On a positive note, I did pass out a little newsletter, one of the first ones we've accomplished with our small staff at the Boys and Girls Club to keep our community informed. And what I want to inform our community about is our, my annual visit is to remind everyone that the PNC Bank Taste of Troy will be coming to Troy again on Sunday, March 6th. This is an event with tickets for $40 per person, $50 at the door, have a chance to enjoy great food from approximately 32 restaurants. This is a large gathering. I think this is one of our largest gatherings in Troy during the wintertime. So as we all gather together to support the club, support the restaurants, and we also support the Boys and Girls Club. And this event definitely brings us an excess of 10% of our operating budget. So the community does support us. I just wanted to remind all of you, you're invited to attend, and keep the club strong. I just want to let you all be aware that we completed the club very well financially in 2010, and our service increased by about 10%. We had about 30, over 33,000 in attendance and using our regular programs and services at the Boys and Girls Club last year. So we've continued to grow, serve more kids, and have them come more often so that they have a fun and safe place to be. So again, thank you, and I hope to see all of you on March 6th at the San Marino Club. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes those that signed up to speak. And so we'll continue on now with the next section, which is response to public comment. Mrs. Bloom, would you like to clarify again? Would you like to talk about the ex parte order first, perhaps?
Actually, Mayor, I'd like to not delve into it a whole lot because it is a lawsuit, it is a pending lawsuit, and it really is not appropriate to be litigating it here in this public forum. However, I would just mention a couple of things. First of all, my response is certainly available, it's a public record. Anybody who wants a copy of it in full, rather than the excerpts that have been used tonight, is certainly entitled to it. I'd be happy to get a copy to anyone who desires a copy of it. Secondly, the hearing on this is set for February 2nd. I am very hopeful that this will be a finalization of this matter. I'm very hopeful that the court will give us an opinion and allow us to move on so that this is not a regular agenda item brought up in the public comment, and the council will have clarity, and will know what to do with these types of petitions that it's not, well, and I've already given the opinion to council that it is not legislative, so that's not a surprise. That was in the November memo that was referenced. And just again, to reiterate, council has not violated the charter because of the order of the court. The order of the court steps in and allows for the additional time. The hearing on the 19th, I did not ask for that to be postponed. That was postponed because there is action being taken on the 2nd, that was already scheduled. And it didn't make sense to go up to court and waste our resources and waste Mr. Kempin's time as well, when nothing would be accomplished. So I just, again, wanted to clarify those items. I'm sure that there are more, but I've taken enough of your time, and will happily answer any specific additional questions that you have.
Thank you. Anything else from public comment section that folks want a response to?
Mayor?
Councilman Horlack?
Just a procedural issue. If the city attorney wouldn't mind when, when there are filings, to just keep council informed, and as a procedure, if you would just, you know, email us copies so that, because other than the email that you sent me this evening, around 6 o'clock, letting me know that the next court hearing was the 2nd, all of my information is being obtained during public comment and from media. And I would appreciate it if your office would just keep council a little bit better informed so that we can be kept abreast of this very political situation, so we can know what's going on. And in the future, perhaps we can have, between council and your office, have better crafted resolutions so that there isn't a perceived discrepancy, whether or not that was the intent.
Mrs. Bloom?
Mayor, I certainly will inform council if there are any new developments. In this case, there were none, so I did not inform council because there was really nothing to report. As far as what happens, as far as communicating, I, if council wants me to provide copies of all of the pleadings, that's a lot of information for you. I, you know, am happy to do that if that is your wish, but it is an awful lot of information. So I would need direction from all of council if that's your desire. so I would need direction from all of counsel if that's your desire.
Mayor.
Anything else? Councilman Slater?
If I could ask the attorney something. A lot of our discussions about lawsuits take place in closed session, is that correct?
Yes.
And by law, I'm not allowed to discuss that direction, but you are given most of your direction from this counsel in closed session on lawsuits, correct?
I am given direction in closed session, and yes, it is inappropriate to be discussing that in open session.
I'm very happy with the correspondence, with our lawsuit, with our, excuse me, with our lawsuits and with your communication. But a lot of what gets discussed about lawsuits is done behind closed doors.
As permitted by the Open Meetings Act.
Right. Yes.
All right, if there are no other, we'll go on then to our regular business items. Councilman Horlak?
Yes, just to respond to Councilman, or follow up on what Councilman Slater said, since we are citing court cases in our request for closed session, could the city attorney let us know if there have been any time since the filing of the initial lawsuit that we have actually met in closed session and cited this particular case?
Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Bloom?
Upon information belief, no.
Thank you.
Mayor.
You know, counsel always has the prerogative individually of phoning either the city attorney or the city manager and inquiring on matters if something is on, you know, if they wanted to have an update on things. So, that's also an option for people if they wish to do that. Sometimes I use that venue just because it, you know, crossed my mind, and I'll think, well, is there anything new, you know, and then I'll, I'll find out. Yes, Councilman Slater?
I think it's important to point out that, excuse me, we did meet in closed session to discuss the Kempin petition and give direction to the city attorney. That's my reaction.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman, Mayor Potem Curwen.
Just a little shift on topic, and that's to talk about Vision 2020.
Oh, yes, that was mentioned.
Right. Vision 2020, in fact, had greatly influenced both the master land, comprehensive master land use plan, and our most recent session on forming goals. We have been tracking what's been going on with 2020 since citizens first gathered about that, we have frequent updates. That has been a most powerful document, I think, in influencing and guiding this counsel in the direction for the future. So, I think that it worked well, and I'm looking forward to talking about some of that since it's in N six, including in our goals, and seeing some of those things continue to come to fruition. It was not a document that was meant to be achieved overnight. Again, this was first done years, a decade ago, and when you're looking at 2020, that was the concept that we were looking out into the future. So, I certainly appreciate all this, yeah, all of the community members who were involved in the different committees, some sitting at the table participated in some of those and the impact and influence that it has had, so.
Next, on the regular agenda, boards and committee nominations, I do not have a name to forward for the board of review at this time. I did speak with the individual whose name was listed as perhaps being interested, but that individual wishes to stay on the board that they are on at present time, so I will bring that forward. The city council nomination item is before us. Does someone wish to move that resolution?
Mayor.
Councilman Horlak?
If I might ask, I know that, I'm looking at this boards and committees nomination for mayoral, and I see there's a reappointment, and that particular term expires on the thirty-first of January, just curious as to what your intent is with that one.
That's the one I, are you speaking about board of review?
Right, there's one resignation and one reappointment.
Oh, I beg your pardon, thank you for catching that. Yes, the reappointment of, I bring forward the name of Eileen Turner for a reappointment to the board of review.
Second.
For the term expiring thirty-first of two thousand and fourteen. Moved for the chair, seconded by Councilman Horlak. Discussion, this is to forward it, and then we'll vote on it at the next meeting because that's our procedure. Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Councilmember Horlak?
Yes.
Curwen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thanks for catching that, Councilman Horlak. Next to the city council nominations, we have the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Beltrameen?
The Planning Commission has forwarded us the names of Thomas Strat to be the Planning Commission representative, and Phil Sanzika to be the Planning Commission alternate. I would put those names in nomination.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilman Horlak. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Curwen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Horlak?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have a request for closed session.
Mayor.
Councilman Horlak?
Be resolved that Detroit City Council shall meet in closed session, Troy versus Sentry Incorporated Pro Car Wash, as permitted by MCL fifteen dot two sixty-eight E, pending litigation. Support.
Moved by Councilman Horlak, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we meet in closed session, as stated in the agenda and red. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Horlak?
Yes.
Curwen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the application for the new Class C quota liquor license, Troy Parks and Recreation Department, Troy Community Center.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
I will move both A and B, resolve that the Troy City Council hereby considers for approval a Class C quota license for the City of Troy Parks and Recreation Department to be located at three one seven nine Lirnoy, Troy, Michigan, four eight zero eight four, Oakland County, Troy Community Center, above all others, and hereby authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the document, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting. Resolve that the City of Troy Parks and Recreation Department is hereby directed to place the new Class C quota license into escrow until such time as a catering vendor is under agreement and has been granted a license transfer.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilman Fleming for both A and B. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilman Horlak?
Just a couple of questions. One, is a quota Class C the only way to accomplish this? Or can a vendor actually use a resort Class C or an event Class C license or some other non-quota license, particularly if this is not necessarily going to be something that happens every day, serving alcohol, that is?
Mrs. Bloom? Do you have an answer, or is there someone?
Yeah, I see Ms. Anderson has come out, and she may have a better answer for it, but there are a limited number of quota licenses, and this is one of the very last quota licenses that we have. I don't know if we have the number for the next year, but we, it is possible to consider it, however, the Class C quota license would provide a caterer, any possible caterers, I think that that would be one of the requirements, and the availability of a Class C quota license is likely to result in a higher caliber of persons bidding on the community center contract. So, it is possible, but again, it may impact the caterers that we have, and Ms. Anderson may have something additionally, I'm not sure.
Ms. Anderson?
There, there is a possibility of getting special event permit, special event license or event license. I don't know that we would, you know, I'm not, certainly not as schooled in the special event license as I am in the Class C, at least to this point, and I don't know with a special event license if you could restrict, like, still to be answered, would any caterer be able to come in with a special event license? We certainly are trying to have as much oversight and monitoring of the serving of alcohol in the community center as possible. With one vendor doing that, I think it lends itself to having better oversight, which is another of the reasons that we were going this route.
And be sure that we clarify for everyone that because it's at the community center, it's just in the banquet facility area, and that would be closely monitored and secured, it is not in the total community center.
Absolutely, and it would be for scheduled events only?
Right.
As well.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
Did you have a follow-up?
Um, go ahead.
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, councilwoman, I thought it was Councilwoman McGinnis was asking for the floor.
Yeah, I'll throw to her.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Well, I-
Couldn't tell who was first here.
I just wanted to point out that I think in terms of marketability, it's a better, it's a better setup, because what we're trying to do is make this something where people that maybe would not have thought of this can come, and it's a one-stop shopping, they're not going to have to be concerned, is the vendor that I'm choosing going to be acceptable? Will they have the correct permit? Will the city accept that, you know, the terms of the contract and terms of liability? So, I think that for long-term planning, this will take care of all of these issues that we are, you know, wondering about and wanting answers to as we go in a different direction than we have before, and I think that it better suits some of the concerns that we saw brought up on the Liquor Advisory Committee as well. They had some of those concerns about alcohol as being sold in the same building, although it is going to be restricted to the banquet area, and it sounds like anyone that's going to come in and take on this position as the person that's going to have the Class C license is going to have to answer to all of those things upfront, we're not going to have to consider it on a case-by-case basis. So, I feel comfortable with this strategy, I think, a little bit more so than I would be taking it on as a case-by-case basis.
Councilman Horlak, you want to the floor again?
Thank you, Mayor. Now, is the intent to have a single vendor only in the banquet section or for all of the meeting rooms? Meaning, one of the things that I know we did a couple of years ago was to essentially allow community groups, if they're running a room, to bring their own foods and, and without having to purchase them from the vendor.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
The answer to that is, other vendors are allowed to use, or groups are allowed to have other vendors provide food. However, the only vendor that would be able to serve alcohol would be the community center's vendor. But at this time, and I know there was a question, I think, at the last meeting or some time ago, that at this time, we do allow other vendors to come into the community center, and we would, we would continue that.
Okay, thank you.
And, and groups, nonprofit, community groups can bring in their own food as well. There's a different charge, fee structure for other vendors, but they are allowed.
Okay, further discussion on this item? Councilman Slater?
Could I ask a question? This is a quota license based on this last year's Sentry, or-
Correct.
So, if we don't use this, we lose it, is that correct anyways?
I don't know that we've had the official notification from the state, but that certainly is a concern, and Ms. Bartholomew may have more information on that.
Ms. Bartholomew?
Actually, this, there are two quota licenses, two Class Cs available. They are based on the two thousand census. The two thousand and ten numbers will be coming in in probably late February, the beginning of March. We do not know at this time if we're going up or down, but at this point in time, we are sitting on two Class Cs, and they do need to be allocated very quickly.
Right.
Any other questions?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Horlak?
Since we're on the subject, out of curiosity, does management know if we've had any requests in the last couple of years for quota Class C licenses?
Mr. Zurla?
Not to my knowledge, but I'll defer to Mrs. Bartholomew if she has any requests.
Actually, the city had one Class C quota, and it is very confusing, but we had one up until about a month ago, and then something was reverted back to the city. Now, it may have occurred in another community that transferred out, we don't know where that one license is, so now that's why we have two. Has someone approached the city about this? Yes, we've had a number of people in the past come to the city. The one Class C quota was a decision several years ago that would be held for the project down on Big Beaver and Coolidge, and so it's been held for that project that did not come to fruition. So, at this point in time, in exchange for losing the quota, this is being brought forward.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bartholomew, the vote then on this side?
Mayor.
Eight, A and B, oh, Councilman Horlak, you weren't finished?
I just wanted to follow up, and it's not a question, but my concern is that we use our quota Class Cs in a most economically viable way, and when we talk about things like tax abatements and so on and so forth, a Class C liquor license in itself is an economic development tool that essentially costs the city nothing. And so, my concern is that using a quota license at the community center is maybe not in the best economic interest of the city, particularly if we are foregoing potential establishment of new entities that would be investing significant amounts of money in the city. But that's just my feeling.
Well, I don't know whether we would have any restaurants that would want to come in and get a license at this time, because we do have some that have, and we just heard of one today that's closing because they, you know, couldn't make it with their restaurant, and so I don't know. I think that we all agreed that we were going to allow for alcohol at the banquet area of the community center as an economic tool, and because the community center is no longer going to get the stipend from the budget that it was getting, that this is one of the areas they were counting on for extra income as people come in. So, I look at it as an economic tool for the community center. I see a hand over here, Mr. Miller.
Madam Mayor, members of council, just to kind of update you in this regard, the planning department in their interaction with developers, especially restaurant developments, they always ask if the city has any of these available to assign to them. Now, we had that, the one which Ms. Bartholomew talked about, which was being reserved for the potential-
Monarch.
No, not Monarch.
Villains.
Pavilion development. And I didn't even know about the second one that was reverted, but to be quite honest, we do not have restaurants seeking to locate right at this time. But there would be, I will tell you, restaurant developers would rather get this one that's allocated to the city than go out on the open market and purchase one.
Madam Mayor.
Okay, yes, Councilwoman Beltrameen?
If a caterer already had a liquor license, they could not necessarily use it at the community center, could they?
No. No, they could not.
You know? It would be specific to locations.
That's what I thought. So, knowing that part of our problem in the past to have an allocated caterer has been the profit margin that they are able to affect, if they also had to purchase a liquor license, A, we lose a certain amount of control- A, we lose a certain amount of control, and B, the viability for them is diminished. And so I think this gives us the best case for being able to find a viable vendor to work within our means and still maintain a profit for those kinds of activities. So I think, obviously, I move a resolution. I think it's a fine idea.
Okay, Ms. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameany?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrleck?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we go to the consent agenda. Does council have any items they want removed?
Mayor?
Councilman Howrleck?
J4D.
J4D. Okay, any others? Can we have a resolution then with approving all of them except for J4D, which we'll take up after the vote?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman, Mayor Pretem Kerwin?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item J4D, which shall be considered after consent agenda items as printed. Support.
Moved by Mayor Pretem Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameany?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrleck?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Councilman Howrleck, you asked for J4D?
Thank you, Mayor. Just curious if we have anybody on council intending to go?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrameany?
I had planned to attend. I was appointed by the incoming chairman as a chairman of one of the city futures panels, so I had planned to attend. I will get a roommate for the conference and use my 5% off Southwest if it's cheaper than Delta.
All right, thank you.
So could we have a resolution for this item? To approve J4D?
Well...
Councilwoman Beltrameany?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby authorizes city council members to attend the National League of Cities 2011 Congressional Cities Conference from March 12th through 16th, 2011, in Washington, DC, in accordance with accounting procedures of the City of Troy. Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameany, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Fleming?
Are we just approving here one person to go, or are we approving as many as would like to go to go? Is there anyone else attending, planning to attend? Just one?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman, Mayor Pretem Kerwin?
Some of us have never attended any. I have no proclivity to go. However, this council has had a long tradition of having some representation. That representation for a while has been Councilmember Beltrameany, and she's served us well prior, when times were different. We had, of course, Councilmember Lambert, who served, I believe, on some national committees. Councilmember and our former mayor, Jean Stein, served on a number of national committees. So I do appreciate Councilmember Beltrameany's taking time away from her family and bringing us back sometimes very comprehensive notes on what she has learned and how it can apply for us here in Troy. So I do appreciate that, and we'll be voting in support.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Fleming?
Yes, I agree. I just wanted to make sure that we were just considering one person going, we didn't need more than one. So that's good. Thank you.
The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltrameany?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrleck?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Item... Oh, let me get those. On the... We have K2, which is the memorandum. Are we going to have a resolution on the next regular agenda, Mr. Zerlag, on this?
That'll be up to city council.
Okay.
City management recommends that we continue the contract, but we made it a green item to get input from the governing body. We'll do whatever you decide.
Usually, when we have a firm for quite some time and the contract runs out, you know, it's been the policy that we go out for bids, et cetera. And that's the way I was thinking until I saw the fact that this firm was offering us a three-year extension at a price from six years ago, and the fact that we are going to be down two people in the department which handle all of this, I thought, we're really not going to save anything by going out for another audit firm. But perhaps in three years, we will.
That's why we made the recommendation, Your Honor.
I don't know how the other council members feel, if they'd like to bring something up about it at this time. Councilwoman Beltrameany, did I see your signal?
Madam Mayor, for all of the reasons you stated and some others in the memorandum from staff, I think that a bid would actually cost us money at this point. And they have served us well. Our financial department staff seems pleased with them. And I also know in speaking to other communities across the nation, that while it's a good idea to change firms from time to time, if you change too often, you lose not only your memory, but their memory as well. And particularly, Raymond Robson has also been very good about not always using the same person. And that is one thing that if we do use the same firm, is recommended. So I think that they are serving us well, and it should be brought forward to us for a continuation.
We have several highly rated auditing firms within the City of Troy. And the firm that we used previous to using this one did an excellent job also. And I think they rotated people, too, when they had the audit. But when I saw the savings that was here, I thought, well, we should go for renewing for the three-year. So are you going to bring us a resolution then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Councilman Howrleck?
My... Man, I think those are valid points, everything that's been said. My discomfort is with the process of when we have utilized essentially all of our options in the initial enabling resolution. So if we're going to have an extension that is beyond those extension periods, I would simply request that if the city manager will be so kind as to bring us a resolution which explicitly says that there's a benefit to the city to not go out to bid. That way, you know, if somebody's looking back on it and says, well, why did you extend it when you had used up all your options in the original resolution? We can say, well, here it is. You know, it's going to save, you know... Because obviously, in the first year of the audit, it takes significant staff resources. So I think that if we come forward with a well-documented resolution, I would be more comfortable.
We'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to go to council comments. And under council comments, I wanted to mention some of the reports that are in here. And I'm sure other council members have some, so I'll just choose one, and then I'll leave some for the others to bring up. It's hard to pick one. The one I think that I will choose to bring up is the update on employee concessions, the classified and exempt employees. I think that you did an excellent job working on getting what we've asked for with employee concessions. But I also note that the classified and exempt employees have led the way, if I recall correctly, quite often when we have contract negotiations, they, classified and exempt employees have stepped up and said that they, you know, would agree to help us out. And I think that it's important that we continue to do what we can in this area, but also to be realistic, to realize that, you know, staff employees are entitled to a certain amount of pay benefit and other benefits for their service, which is excellent in this community. So unless you had something you wanted to add, Mr. Zerlag, on that one, I'm going to leave some of these other ones for the other council members.
Just wanted to thank you for your thoughts on the matter, and also to thank the classified and exempt employees for their willingness to grant these concessions. Now, granted, as manager, they're not organized, I could say, in an edict format, this is what you are going to have for a concession. But we decided that it's so critical to have a workforce that wants to take ownership of their tasks, that want to come to work, that believe that their employer is fair. And so we had a series of meetings. It wasn't just me. John Lamorato, Mark Miller, and Peggy Sears were at every meeting that we had. We had four or five meetings with essentially everyone in the classified and exempt service. And they were functional meetings, and I wanted to thank everyone involved for proceeding in this fashion. As the letter indicates, we now have about a third of all of our full-time workforce that will have a 10% reduction, not just in their base wage or salary, but the base wage, including pension costs, workers' compensation, and FICA. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McGinnis, did you want to bring up your... The item that mentions you is the library update. Is that the one you wanted to bring up, or did you have another one?
Actually, I had a couple of comments about a few different things.
Okay, go ahead, I'll call in your next.
Sometimes I don't say everything I want to say during council comments. I figured I would just take this opportunity. It's early still, you guys can listen to me hammer around here for a few minutes. But I wanted to point out a couple of things, and then I'll finish up with N10, which referenced myself and some of the library issues that I asked for a bit more clarification on. But first was N6, and I think that we'll probably discuss this. I was pleased to see that we have a draft of the hard work that we put into our visions and goals, our study sessions. I definitely want to keep the momentum going on this. So I don't know if we need to have a conversation about what we'd like to do. I think at our study session, the one potential tweak that we would have left was if we were going to tweak the vision statement, because I don't know if we were going to leave it in two parts as it's listed in the draft, or if we were going to refine it and make it something a bit more complete. But either way, I want to keep the momentum going. I think the next step that we need to do would be to talk about metrics or have staff work on metrics, so we can get a way to start measuring these goals in place. And we can obviously use that in our communications with the public. I think it's something that I would like to see on the website once it's completed. It kind of ties in with the comments that I wanted to make on N7, which would be the updates from the January meeting of the city managers' roundtable, business roundtable discussions. I think that a lot of the comments that you'll see, both in this report and the quarterly report that we received, gives us a lot of feedback on how we can measure some of these things that we're setting as our goals in terms of attracting and retaining business development. So I wanted to find a way, while we're really hot on both of these things, to tie them together, to finish up our project, which has been a long time in the works in terms of goals and visions, and, you know, put a bow on it, wrap it up, put it on the website, and really start talking to people about it, because I think it's giving us some great direction. And I think it will also show the business community that we're listening to what they have to say in terms of taking in their feedback, discussing it, and then using it in terms of measuring our goals. I also had a few comments on the update to our employee concessions. Just to throw out a number, I'm sure you all read it, that's 32% now of our full-time workforce that has stepped forward and come up with the 10% goal that we were trying to attain in terms of concessions. I think, at least I can speak for myself, in no way are we trying to balance the budget on the backs of the workforce. It would not be financially possible, and it wouldn't be good for the city. Obviously, we want to maintain the exceptional professional workforce that we have here, and we can't do that by taking out all the financial problems on the workforce. But I'm very happy to see that city management has been able to work with people in terms of reaching our goals that we first outlined when we talked about coming up with a budget solution. So there was a lot of great things in the report section, and I know that sometimes it goes unnoticed because they're not action items, and that's why I've taken all this time to put the comments together. But the last thing that I wanted to bring up would be N10, and that's a library update. I've already referenced this in a few emails today when I was communicating with some members of the public, and my name is on it, so I should take some ownership and just put it out there. I have a feeling that when we sit down and have discussions about the budget after we receive our ICMA reports, that we're obviously going to be talking about some of these things again. But I wanted it to get out to us kind of before we even sat down to do that, so we could be apprised. I know that in terms of quality of life, we've spent the last several months hearing from, hearing the results of all of the hard work from the museum, and a lot of the hard work that's gone into trying to sustain the nature center after they no longer have funding from the city. And we've got some tangible results and things that we've all stood behind, and I'm very proud to see that we've accomplished, although, you know, it doesn't clearly define exactly where we'll go with those two places from here on out. It shows us the possibilities that are there. And there's a lot of stuff we've been talking about in terms of the library, but I don't think we've really stopped to get an update on the things that we're continuing to do and exploring those avenues. I don't want people to think that the conversations have stopped. And I think that there's a lot of information in this report that I would like council to take a look at, and I'm sure that they did before the meeting, but also anyone that's interested enough to check out our agenda, because it has some information about other avenues that we've explored. Many of them have met with an answer that perhaps is not the one that we want to hear. But I think that it's proof, it's in writing, that we are continuing to look at other options. And there's also some extensive information about state aid and exactly what state aid means for our library. And I don't know about anyone else on the council, but I've received many questions from people in the community that say, why do we even care about state aid if we're responsible for funding the library?